I call the meeting to order please. Please stand as led to the legion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey John.
Mr. Hager.
I'm here.
Mr. Ricker.
Here.
Colgan.
Here.
Mr. Snead.
Here.
Mr. Stanford.
Here.
Mrs. Hodges.
Here.
Mrs. Crispin.
Here.
Well, as everyone can see, we have Lafayette High School basketball team here that we want to recognize. Coach Neff, if you'll introduce your players, please.
Yes, Caleb Bennett, Gary Wilkinson, Ryan O'Kay, Bryson Soucy, O'Shea Kirby, Billy Cook, Drew Cortez, Nick Hubbard, Cole Lehman, Xavier Kirk, Chester Godot, Malik Hughes, my assistant Darrell Williams, and the head coach, John John Neff.
Fellas, on behalf of the Board of Education, we have a special recognition for you. But let me first say, Coach, that back in the 70's, I watched your daddy, a guy by the name of Mel Clark, playing basketball. And one of those basketball players I saw earlier in this room, where's Chris Self? Chris is around here somewhere. Well, anyway, I think about that feeling with those guys. The excitement that was created during that time at the state tournament was amazing. And when I watched you fellas, I'm telling you, that excitement was there. And you teach these, you have taught these youngsters to play with the spirit that your daddy and Mel Clark placed into the guys that I just mentioned and all those other fellows. So congratulations to you, and again, to each of you. And we have a special award even for you because you were the big cheerleader out there helping the team along. We appreciate that very, very much. We betcha. Thank you. What a great year. Now, we're looking for an even bigger year next year.
How many years seniors?
Four.
Okay, Ryan, Ryan Stovall, you're up.
Uh, the Technologies Association of Manhattan Lafayette River Dune went down March 30th and 31st, April 1st to Rollin Zernd Computer State TSA Competition. Central had a national qualifier in manufacturing putter type. It's designed, it's a bottle drink holder, a carton, a completely piece of usable furniture, with CNC budget pad, whatever. There are a lot of parameters except forceful protection to that. That's Central's first ever national qualifier. I'll let Bob Linger from Benton tell his kids how they performed.
I had many kids. Sidney Hawkins had an aviation poster that got first to go to Nationals. I had four kids that worked on a video that got second place. And I also had another one that had a photography that got second place.
Good job.
Taught Rocket River Dune Middle School, and I want the kids to go first. I'm really proud of these kids. Starting on to Ryan Sebastian, he's our student who looks like a teacher. We had a group of three, and Sebastian and Megan and Sadie, who's not here, they qualified in energy systems. Sebastian later won in robotics and team competition. Everybody kept thinking he was a teacher, and I guess he was a student. Jeremy, the second gentleman there, he also won. And he won with River. And they won in a project that was called Technology Problem Solving. Technology Problem Solving, they throw them a problem, and they have eight hours to prepare it. And those two, I kid you not, they started at 7:30, and at 4:45, they were ready. They looked spent. And it was absolutely amazing how much work they put in. And they beat the state, the three-time holding state champion on it. I was really proud of them. They also, Jeremy won in energy systems, Megan won in energy conversion systems, and River also won in robotics. And that was a different competition. I'm really proud. I also want to compliment our teachers, because this was a team effort of all our teachers at River Dune, and reflects on all of them. Thank you, you're wonderful young people.
Could I have the other students who won awards to come back up here?
This is, by the way, this is the first time a middle school's qualified for Nationals that we know of.
Next, we have Ms. Keeman from Mark Twain.
First of all, I'd like to recognize my volunteer chair. This is Crystal. Crystal Wilk, I don't even have her kid with me anymore. She stays with us at Mark Twain to help organize our volunteers. And she does an amazing job. And it's made very, very easily because our business partner is Brookdale Church, which represents all of the people up here. And I'll tell you a little bit about each one of them. The first one we'll start with is Michael Welsby. He's the pastor, tell me, the associate pastor for...
Just associate.
Perfect. He's the associate pastor. He comes down every Monday morning and gets prayer requests from our staff so that the church can go back and pray for us, which we deeply, deeply love and need down there at Mark Twain. He is on the garden committee. He is on just about any committee that we could ask for, along with the rest of Brookdale. Mr. and Mrs. Wykov, how many years have you been at Mark Twain?
Fourteen or fifteen.
They come down and mentor our kindergarten kids, and the kindergarteners just love every single minute of it. They can't wait to see them at the door. Today, we had a garden celebration. And when we were getting ready to do all of the festivities, they found time during the luncheon to go get some kids. I was like, really, y'all don't have to mentor today. It'd be okay if you took a day off. But they didn't want to do that, so we very much appreciate all they do for us. The Pokemills, what do I say about the Pokemills? They are wonderful. They are there every time we turn around. They run the food program in the summer. They, really, have I ever asked you for anything that you just didn't jump up and do? So they help out in any way, shape, or form they can. Ms. Connie Bonebray. What a delight. I have two of her grandchildren there. She volunteers every single day in the lunchroom, and mentors kids, and talks with kids, and tells them about her life in the medical field, and inspires kids to live there during the medical field. This is Nancy. Nancy is our library extraordinary. She helps out in there whenever possible. Even sometimes whenever I need to pull that teacher out of the room for a little bit, there's Nancy right there checking out books with kids and reading with them. And once again, Paulster Wilkerson, who is just the volunteer extraordinary. So that is Brookdale Church, and I thank them for everything they do for us. That's just a Brookdale Church.
I think there's something really important to say because volunteering came, it comes very easy for us. Many, many, many years ago, people can remember the first time we put together a cold weather policy. And this woman is instrumental in helping us come up with the guidelines that we now use and continue to use. And thank you, you are a sweet.
Thank you.
Dr. Wong.
I miss you too.
So in honor of National School Counselors Week, Ms. Joey Austin, she produced a video titled "The Many Faces of St. Joseph's School District Counselors." So last week, MSDA, Missouri State Teacher Association, notified us that the video was an award winner in their audio/video school district category in their media arts contest. MSDA recognizes outstanding coverage of education and education issues by the Missouri media, along with school district communication achievements. Award winners are judged on originality, impact, objectivity, timeliness, appeal, and contribution to education. So congratulations, Ms. Austin.
Next is the presentation of artwork. Mr. Verbi.
I'm just so excited, there's so many people here at Sidney's Kids Art. Okay, Dr. Wong and board, as you know, each spring, the superintendent picks artwork that is hung out here in the hallway, and then each May, we hand it back to the kids framed. It's a really great opportunity to show off some extreme talents of kids. So first, is someone... First, I'd like to recognize Alicia Williams, who did this as a pinnergardener at Hyde. And she is now in first grade at Hyde. There you go, sweetie, well done. I was doing birds like M's when I was... All right, and then over here, we have Skylar Ford. Skylar did this as a senior last year at the Yet. She also did the summing bird. And as I understand it, Skylar, you're now a freshman at Missouri Western studying elementary ed. And her sister is a teacher at Mark Twain. Okay, now we have Maria Diaz, did this last year as eighth major at Cody. She's now at Central, freshman. In addition to some other things, you've just recently won another award that you're going to go next to Kansas on Thursday to your honorable mention. What was the name of that?
Yes.
I Dream of the World?
I Dream of the World.
Awesome. Well done. And we have a couple more from Edison. This is Hanlu and Mitchell Willis. We framed those together because they were good self-portraits. But since we framed them together, and they are both from Edison, Jelker Gandal is here this evening to accept that, and it is for being at Edison. Thank you.
Mr. Verbi. Audience participation. And Mr. Rocket, you're probably aware that you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Zawanka, President and Vice President Hager. I'm here, and I'm Mr. Todd Rocket. I'm the SGA NEA president, and I represent teachers. Iron sharpens iron, said in Scripture. And sometimes opposition can strengthen one. That's where we're at tonight. I'm sorry, Dr. Zawanka, that you inherited the mess you inherited, as you have said. You inherited a system that was basically broken. Teachers were devalued. And by what I want to say by devalued is, a Mercedes is worth more than a Corolla. And simply put, if you devalue teachers, and you pay teachers less, and you consistently don't increase their wages, right along with everyone else, you're showing they're not valued. We have tried for years to reconcile this. I spoke to this board earlier this year about changing the board policy with regard to collective bargaining, with choosing exclusive bargaining agent. And I hope this board really looks at that policy and gives the teachers a voice. A voice for an organization that will represent them. To ask them for raises, raises that are equitable. Nine years ago, we had Career Ladder, and we were thankful. Dr. Colgan, thank you. You fought hard for that program, and we thank you for it. It launched a thousand dreams, remodeled a thousand houses, helped a thousand kids through school. Slowly, that was taken from us. The Career Ladder was added to administrators, but there was never any state funding. It was funded entirely by the school district. When Career Ladder was taken from teachers, it was said, we have to take this because we are losing funding from the state. My first question is, why was it taken from the teachers and not from the administrators? Now, tonight, we're going to try to renew that stipend. That stipend that was handed to administrators years ago for no extra work. We had to turn in 120 hours. I, on principle, stopped Career Ladder three years ago. All the students you saw here tonight, those my own time. Six days, my own time. I'll do it again, but at the same time, there's fairness. You don't invite friends to your house and feed one friend a peanut and another friend a steak and say that's fair. Just doesn't work. Now, when we came to the new superintendent, we were very hopeful. We heard this saying, servant leadership. And I totally agree with that. Let the servant of all be the leader of all. And I agree, and I compliment Dr. Zawanka on that. At the same time, to hand administrators $5,000 and give nothing to teachers. So we hit December, and we looked at our calendar. Teachers, five days added. Five days of professional development added. I tried to contact the meet and confer committee. Are we going to be compensated for that? We don't know. We heard rumors of a tremendous pay raise coming our way, like a giant tidal wave coming through the ocean. When it arrived, what it amounted to was taking the money from this pocket, handing it to a person, and putting it in the other pocket. It was not a pay raise. It was simply a transference. Again, teachers were on the losing side. I sat here on the night that Ms. Stanford talked about the stipends. I didn't know. I had no idea the depth and the breadth of the stipends given. I struggled inside, because for me, the students are everything. But at the same time, I struggled with the fact that it's just not fair. If you're going to value your teachers, pay your teachers. $8,000 below average. $8,000 below average. Administrators are at the top. They're right behind Park Hill. So therefore, tonight, what we are asking is, from you, Dr. Zawanka, a pledge, this calendar year for a $2,500 stipend for every teacher in this district. Start a break and say, we value you as educators. We value you. We're going to send you all with money that we should have paid you last summer. When we were giving the money to administrators, we should have turned around and said, here, teachers, we value you also. We know your morale's low. We know you've worked hard. We are going to give you this money, even though it's half. We are not asking for an entire administrator's stipend. We are asking for half, half the money. Half the money that was taken from us in Career Ladder. Half the money that was paid those administrators last summer. Again, I thank you, and I ask for your consideration.
Distinguished members of the school board, ladies and gentlemen, it's especially gratifying to see such a great turnout this evening because I am confident everyone in this room this evening is after the same objective, and that is educating each child for success. So we applaud you for attendance here this evening. And members of the school board, we want to thank you for everything you're doing for the young people in St. Joseph, Missouri. I have two objectives this evening. First of all, I need to, I was asked by Mayor Bill Faulkner to read a letter to you this evening. Unfortunately, the mayor is tied up in a city council work sessions, immediately followed up by the city council meeting. But he asked me to share some comments with you here this evening with respect to experiences that he's had. So this is addressed to the members of the St. Joseph's School Board. A little over seven years ago, the city of St. Joseph underwent an audit, brought on by citizens to calm fears that funds were being misused. It took a number of months to thoroughly complete the process, during which all kinds of rumors were spread that hurt the city's image. At the conclusion of the audit process, little was found to have been done illegally, but adjustments needed to be made. Unfortunately, rumors had prevailed. It's important for everyone to understand that as you all move through the process, the school board, our administrators, our educators, and everyone involved, to understand that the process, the process goes forward. Don't get caught up in unsubstantiated rumors. Nothing productive happens when rumors like this are spread. It only causes harm to our community. Please be patient through the process, through the investigations, through the audit, and have faith that everything will be brought to light. Let's leave the focus on students and those graduating, and not take away from their accomplishment. Signed, Mayor Bill Faulkner. I wanted to share a couple of comments with you this evening against Steve Johnston, and just talk a little bit about St. Joseph's School District. There is absolutely no question that the St. Joseph's School District is the cornerstone. It's the foundation of this entire community. Educating 11,000 young people is certainly critical to the future. You know, just very recently, the Area Development Council magazine moved the ability of a skilled workforce to be the number-one criteria for site selectors. The number-one reason folks expand their businesses or come to our community to bring new education here. Every community in America, of course, faces critical challenges in trying to accomplish that. But we feel that those challenges in creating innovative ideas and solutions and partnering to achieve better results, that particular challenge has definitely been taken on by the St. Joseph's School District, the business community, and et cetera. So St. Joseph's School District has risen to that challenge, and there's no question that skilled workers, again, they provide the background of productivity and efficiency, efficient economy for our community. We have a solid education system. Educating young people and those 1,800 dedicated employees, we applaud in all of their efforts and everything that they do in improving the lives of young people in our community. But now, we face some adversity. And again, I want to emphasize that I feel confident that everyone in this room is, has the same goal and the same objective, and that is education, educating each child for success. One anonymous source said about adversity, adversity reveals and shapes character. I think that's a true statement as we move forward. As we have these troubled waters out here, I want to share an experience with you that happened to me over the weekend. It may seem kind of simple, but I think it applies to almost everything that we do in life. You know, my wife and I bought this large picture a couple of weeks ago, and I've been avoiding cleaning it up because it's real heavy and it's real big. And I just really didn't want to take that on. So I took it on Saturday morning, and after putting about 12 holes in the wall, trying to get it level and get it just right so that it would, my wife finally said, why don't you get out the level? Why don't you get out the level? So I got out the level, and I'll be darned if we just didn't get it back. Even though that all the holes are behind the picture, that's okay. At least we have it leveled now. So, but when you think about a level, you think it's a pretty simple process, wouldn't you? But if you think about that bubble right in the center, if you just go a little too much to the right, a little too much to the left, we're all out of whack. We're all out of whack. But having that bubble in the center, if you will, that's important for us as individuals, balancing the budget, balancing the bubble, if you will. It's important for our families, it's important for our businesses, for our organizations. We need to balance the budget, the bubble. And so I'm confident that everyone here tonight will help us as a community in our St. Joseph's School District to balance the bubble. It's important to us as we move forward. Another anonymous source says, I'm sorry, adversity strengthens us. Let's make this happen together. In just less than two weeks, we have 700 students who will be graduating from our area high schools. That's an amazing accomplishment. It's an accomplishment for our students, for our parents, for their families. It's an accomplishment for all of our educators throughout the entire system who have worked so hard with those young people throughout their time, throughout their lives, in educating each child for success. We have much to be thankful for. We have an amazing community partnership going on now with Hillier Technical Center, where our federal government has allocated funds, where the city, the county, the St. Joseph Foundation are all working together to build an appropriate new expansion for Hillier Technical Center. So as we strive to move forward, we need to do that with a continued sphere of commitment. Again, with that, though, everybody working together. We're all there, we just need to make sure we're channeling all of our energies in the same direction. We thank you very much for the opportunity to present this evening. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the Board of Education, since with a heavy heart I stand before you this evening, approximately eight weeks ago, I stood in this very spot and was brutally attacked by Mrs. Stanford with a mallet in her heart. The fall served both slanderous and a direct attack on my personal, professional reputation and integrity. She claimed I gave raises to five individuals, including my wife, which is untrue. She also stated I refused to follow her directive and violated Board Policy GBL and the sunshine law. First, Board Policy BBA states, the Board will be aware, will make aware that the Board has authority to take official action only when it is acting as a whole. Because I did not comply with Mrs. Stanford's personal request, I have endured harassment in a hostile work environment ever since. Second, Policy GBL makes it clear of what type of information is available to the public. Since the Board of Education did not invoke the Director Superintendent, should create such a document, all requests from individual Board member will be treated as any other citizen's request. Any request for information would be considered a sunshine request and made through the custodian of records, which is identified in Policy BBL and the law. Mrs. Stanford, I do not understand either of these before she personally attacked me or just didn't care. She has created an environment so hostile, we have lost several great individuals in our organization last year. Each of the following individuals will target some percutaneous harassment. Dr. Melody Smith, Sherri Patterson, Dr. Laura Nelson, and Jenna Pullman. This harassment has since transferred to myself and Dr. Zawanka, as well as other staff members. I will not divulge, so they are not subject to hostile work environment others have endured. Board Policy C B clearly articulates, the Superintendent shall be the representative of the Board and the channel through which all directives from the Board to its employees and students be communicated. Additionally, Policy C A states, the Board shall be responsible for clearly specifying requirements and expectations to the Superintendent, who in turn shall be responsible for clearly specifying the same for all other administrators. Board Policy B B F states, all Board members will recognize that individual Board members have no authority to speak or act for the Board, express personal opinions, but once a Board has acted, accept the will of the majority, and refrain from divulging confidential information presented during closed session, except where required by law. Since Board elections in April 2012, the district administration has been under constant attack by Mrs. Stanford. Everything she reports to hate about administrators, she is a moor. The hostile working environment she has created has to stop. Board Policy A C states, demeaning or otherwise harmful actions are prohibited. It also defines harassment as a form of discrimination that when the school or work environment becomes permeated with intimidation, ridicule, or insult, that is sufficiently severe and pervasive enough that it unreasonably alters employment and educational environment. The hostile working environment created by Mrs. Stanford is pervasive, seems retaliatory, because I did not follow her individual directive. Mr. Weston recently wrote an article titled, "Celebrate Seeking the Truth." And it states bloggers have the same credibility as established newspapers and TV stations when they are not held to same journalistic standards. I want to remind Mr. Weston that his employer allows for bloggers to comment on online articles. Get prints, it's your call. It allows for editorials based on opinion, not fact. The truth is, people believe what they read in the paper. He further states, when rumors and nasty false reports posted on the internet and emails are considered news sources, the truth has to compete with all that today. I respect Mr. Weston and Mr. Gore, and hope they seek the truth as much bigger in fashion as they reported recent rumors and false reports. The media has become pawns to orchestrated attacks in St. Joseph School District. Not only has individual administrators have been attacked, so has the credibility of the district as a whole. Our children deserve more, our communities deserves more. Finally, I submitted formal grievance to the Board of Education President and Legal Counsel on March 28th outlining many of these concerns in regard to policy. I have yet to hear from the Board concerning that grievance. Board Policy G B N clearly identified the timeline for response. I am and have requested the hostile work environment and harassment created by Mrs. Stanford to stop. If it continues, I'll be forced to submit a formal complaint to the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission and the Absurd Commission of Human Rights. Thank you.
Debbie, is there any more audience participation? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Paulgin?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion for, to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I would like to take an item off the consent agenda. I would like to take the April 2014 financial statements off.
So, before you go, we're going to pull out financial statement, 6.3. And then, Mr. Briggs, our newest Board members are going to abstain on 6.4, 6.5, and 6.6. Is that right?
No one can hear back here.
No, we can't hear.
We can't. We can't hear.
None of your microphones are turned on.
Mr. Brady, if they're going to abstain from that, don't they have to abstain from the whole consent agenda?
Well, they can be either just pulled, because they can vote on our second, and they can abstain on those two items and then go on with the rest. In case you're wondering back there, there's a couple of items, the minutes that our newest Board members didn't get to see, wasn't involved in. So they're pulling it out. And then, Mrs. Stanford wants to pull out the financial statement for April 2014. But everything else is good.
So which one of those minutes?
It's 6.4 and 6.5. Because we were on the board on the 8th.
So do we need to remake a motion on that? For the consent?
It's my understanding that the three items are a formal word, which is, normally policy, according to the Board of Education, I'd like to consider separately. Those are the names that were considered separately, but on the rest, that nobody should have done.
So 3, 4, and 5 will be removed, and now we're entertaining a vote for the rest. Correct.
About 20 seconds. Sorry, there's a second.
Debbie, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Paulgin?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes. So on 6.3, would you like some further discussion?
Right. On 6, oh, that's on. On 6.3, the line item, because I'm not page number, 6110, on certified salaries. When I look across its year-to-date actual over/under, it has this over, that line item, 1.2 million. So I just want a clarification of why we are over salaries 1.2 million. It's under operating funds expenditures by month for fiscal year, and the line item is 2110. Page one. What do you know? Page one's in the middle. Go there. I'm sorry, I copy mine, that's why I have them here. Okay. Line 6110. Account code 6110.
Dr. Zawanka, would you want to address that?
I would have to defer to Ms. Mulaney because I'm not sure. I don't have that in front of me.
We can go over these at the finance meeting, so I'm kind of upset about that, that this is the first time that we've seen the financials for April and that we're voting on them, especially when I see that item is over budget.
I recommend that we pull this off, let's take it out of the consent agenda until we get further information and bring it back. Is that okay?
That's fine. Oh, absolutely. I just want...
Let's go through the committee and then they can explain it to the financial committee.
I'm going to, what's the CY, Stanford? There's a CY and there's a PY.
Current year.
Current year, okay.
So this, okay, so 6.3, we will bring it back to the finance committee and we can do that.
Right. Because I had to, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving to 6.4, 6.5. Can I entertain a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Debbie, please call the roll.
Dr. Paulgin?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Abstained.
Mrs. Crisman?
Abstained.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Okay, 7.1, Administrative Board Rome HVAC.
Members of the Board, since the finance committee meeting, we reconciled the CIP budget, and I would like to draw your attention to the fact that that account as of today is $211,000 in the red. The Fieldhouse project at Lafayette High School was originally budgeted for $600,000, and $600,000 was placed from the fund balance into the CIP account to take care of that project. As we had discussed during the course of that project and with Board approval, the scope of work was changed, increased, and the total on that Fieldhouse project was So the Fieldhouse project used $274,000 of the CIP budget, which had been projected to use for maintaining district infrastructure. Whether or not the Board wants to make a determination about reimbursing the CIP account, the $274,000 is strictly a Board decision. If you take the $274,000, if you take the $211,000 that the account is in arrears, and the cost of the HVAC system here were at about a wash. And so when the item was presented, it was presented with the assumption that the Board would reimburse the CIP account from the fund balance. Don't want to make that assumption, so I want to bring it to the Board's attention. There's really three options. You could reimburse the account that amount, cover the $211,000, and take care of the air conditioning project. We could do the air conditioning project from the 2014-15 CIP projects list. The asphalt bids came in nearly $200,000 less than anticipated when those projects were forecast in December. We calculated the pricing based on square footage when they were actually walked in March. It was the suggestion of the general contractors and our architect that we not have to do complete tearouts of the main drives that are part of the asphalt bid, and therefore the CIP budget has a contingency then with all projects done of that $200,000. We could use that money for this air conditioning project, or we could simply delay it, not do it now, and wait and see how long the system will operate. So in summation, really, the question is, does the Board have any intent, or is it your wish to reimburse the CIP account, the $274,000 from the fund balance? In the fact that the Lafayette project cost $274,000 more, we could do the project out of 2014 CIP, or we can delay the project and monitor the system going forward.
Mr. Sneeden? What would you recommend on this? What's the best route here?
You know, I hate to spend that kind of money when the system is actually works. It's loud, it's noisy, but that's not the sole reason. Eventually, it's going to stop working. All of them in this building have at one time or another. The issue that we have is the way the original design was configured is, all of the infrastructure lie underneath the air conditioning unit. So if it just fails one day, we'll close this building for two or three days while we take out the gas lines, the water lines, the electrical lines, the data lines to drop the unit and then make the replacement. It's better to do it when we can control the timing and the environment, but I would say that it's not an absolute must at this point. I think we could just really go either way. We can gamble and hope it goes a little longer, and then it's not at a critical time that it goes out, or we could move forward as planned. That's not really answering your question, it's, I just think, you can't argue either way is acceptable.
Was the bid within the amounts that we had anticipated?
Well, the first numbers that we received were about seven years ago, at $35,000, and the scope of work is significantly more, and inflation, obviously, and so the cost is $68,000. It takes the unit and it designs it correctly as it should have been originally and places it on the road.
Was there a motion, or will we decide to wait?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Rucker? Yes, we can.
I think this item ought to be tabled until we give more information on if we have to or don't, and what's the final decision as to do it or not. And have more discussion on this. So Mr. Rucker?
I would agree with Mr. Rucker. I'd like to make a motion to table this item for further discussion, for further review.
Second. There's a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Paulgin?
Yes.
Brad, I hate to do this to you, but can we change the agenda? amend the agenda, because I got to get back to work here, I got kids waiting on me. Can we move right now, 7.5 to the next item, the salary schedule revision? And let's cut through the fat to get to the bone here. Takes a motion from the Board, because I know it was in there during the session, but that is something you can do.
All right, I make the motion. We move item number 7.5 to the next item. So first, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Pauling?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Flowers.
7.5 is revisions and modifications made to salary schedule presented to you last month. Those revisions are based on provisions. We wanted to be as transparent with the Board of Education and the public as possible. We reviewed, I reviewed, every contract, every extra duty stipend, any stipend given to this district. And that is an effort to put everything in the salary schedule book and have it booked upon the Board of Education. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Well, we asked a lot of questions in the committee meeting.
Anything high that was a change?
I'll entertain a motion.
I have a concern to put both the stipends and the salaries together. I would like to make a motion to remove the stipends in this motion. Second. I think we need to take a look at this.
Let's clarify the first motion, though. I mean, there wasn't a motion to accept anything, no?
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Rucker?
Well, I get the most, I guess, I have to take it.
I think it means everyone, but I'm far away, but are we talking about redoing the whole salary book? Or are we just talking about the additions of what was found in the last couple weeks?
It's my interpretation, after talking with Mr. Briggs, and he can clarify further for these two, that we're just talking about those items that are highlighted, which are amendments to the salary schedules that's already been passed.
The salary schedule has been passed, you say?
Yes, last month.
Okay, so today's salary schedule, let me ask, Mrs. Danforth, are you talking about the stipends that are part of, right now? Or what are you talking about, you said, the stipends?
Well, Mr. Rucker, actually, I think what I'm going to do is, and this will answer your question, I'm going to withdraw my motion that I made and make a different motion.
Okay.
My motion that I'd like to make is to approve the salaries, revised salaries, that are in front of us, the administrative shift, the teacher, the 180, the 260, the non-teacher salary, the nutrition services, the substitute salary, to approve those pages.
Okay, hold on just a second, I'm trying to catch up to you here. I got my computer, but I'm not on your page.
Hang on, Mr. Rucker, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Rucker.
Okay, Mrs. Danforth, I'm trying to get on the same page. What page are we looking at?
Well, I'm, it's everything, everything in our salary schedule that's as that attachment. It's everything up there, up to the extra duty salary schedule and to take those last four pages off. So just approving the salary schedule, not the extra duty schedule.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have that. Sorry, this guy was on the phone. No, but you're saying that these stipends that we already, okay, are, we're not talking about those?
I'm talking.
You're not talking about those, you're not talking about some folks that are already in place, is that right?
Yes, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the last four pages that have some of the ones we've already approved and then there's probably 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. There's probably 40 new ones on here. So I am talking about making, just the motion of approving this new, the salary, the revised salary, but taking off the extra duty schedule and reviewing that later.
Reviewing that further?
Yes, please.
You're talking about reviewing that further, ma'am?
Yes, yes, Mr. Rucker. I believe that we all still have questions about those and we would like to just table it for now, get more information and then be educated in how we move forward.
Mr. Sneeden?
Okay, I understand, I'm just trying to be on the same page.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest maybe a friendly amendment to include the football, basketball coach, the band, anything that's not administration. This is normal, extra pay for extra duties for coaches, cheerleaders, ROTC, but not, but not any administration pieces. In other words, that stuff is all pretty much, what I don't want to do is panic some of these band instructors or ROTC and all, they're not involved in all this. And it's mostly aimed at administration and coordinators. But would that be something to consider? Because it's filled out, there's no, there's no administration on that whole page and then other categories, orchestra, student council, percussion, and there's nothing in there that pays more than.
Would you bring it down through the middle school, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Why don't we keep that separate for now? I mean, right now, the motion is for those salary schedules.
Yeah, but she made the motion, I'm just asking if she had a minute.
I would like to keep them separate.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, Debbie, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Pauling?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
So now we have split that and we tabled the stipends to look into further? Is that correct, or do we have to?
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I made that motion, I can.
The motion is to table the extra duty salary schedule and we'll gather further information on that.
Mr. Hager, may I make comment?
Yes.
I think it's important to understand that as salary notifications go out to support staff, their salaries will be decreased in some cases because there are many support staff members who also have extra duty stipends. And so I just want the board to be prepared for those individuals who may make comments in regard to their salary being less than what it was this current year.
Ms. Danforth?
Are the stipends of support staff, are they listed in here?
All stipends are listed in there.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, Mr. Rucker?
Mrs. Danforth, didn't you just say jelly could be reviewed?
Yes, I did. And I stand by that.
They just to review?
I defer to our chair.
Well.
I'm sorry?
I defer to Mr. Hager.
Mr. Rucker, in light of all the concerns about these stipends, I've asked Mr. Sneeden and Mrs. Hodges to chair an ad hoc committee to review the stipends. They will request teachers, principals, staff, and I hope a couple HR, a couple individuals from the community that have HR experience to review all of our stipends. I'd like to charge them to meet within the next 30 days to discuss, you know, there's some stipends on here, such as the head football coach, track coach. You know, those type of stipends, you know, we need to get those things approved for this year. But I'd like them to really evaluate to see if even those stipends are paid appropriately. I mean, because we might be paying too much, but we're probably not paying enough for a lot of those stipends. And so they're going to, they're going to get a committee together, PDQ, and meet within the next 30 days and make a recommendation to us as far as these stipends that we know that teachers are expecting and teachers deserve. And then look at the rest of the stipends and then have a recommendation to the board going forward.
Can I volunteer to be on that committee?
Who was that?
Tim Miller.
Uh, Mr. Hager?
You said someone from the community, correct? I've lived in this community my entire life. Is that good enough?
Can we get your phone number and I'll have Mr. Sneeden call you?
You want it now or you want me to give it to you later?
You can give it to me now. And your name is?
Tim Miller.
Tim Miller.
I'm Dr. Bragg, here in the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Mr. Rucker?
Um, Mr. Hager, can I ask a question about the teachers? If there are any of your support staff, especially the children, who will have a loss today until we get this done, will we pay retro property or do we want to get this reviewed?
These salary schedules for next year and should have no impact on current payroll.
I'm sorry, did not hear that.
For next year?
This is for next year, Mr. Rucker. So we'll take care of it before then.
I know, but I got to, I got to, it's more exercise.
I'm assuming that you're anticipating a recommendation from the committee for our next board meeting, or is that too soon?
I anticipate it before that next board meeting.
Okay, so we would be voting on it at our next board meeting? That would be nice.
That's correct.
So Martin, we would be doing that in, at our general meeting?
Okay, okay.
Anticipated or charged?
I'm sorry?
Anticipated or charged with having it available?
Charged. Is there any further questions, discussion? So just to clarify, the motion is to table and review the extra duty stipends schedule.
I think it's important to point out that some of these are not extra duty, necessarily extra duty stipends. Some have already been issued as far as teachers' contracts, as the board approved these last month.
So we need to get a list of those out of Martin and.
Isn't it all the ones that are not highlighted, that have been approved already? Is that correct? You said the highlighted ones were new?
There's others that aren't highlighted, that are new. We'll just get Doug to give us a list of those that have already been in their contracts and then we'll meet with the committee and deal with each one. I would also suggest too, before I leave here, that we contact MSBA and let them, and pay them if we have to, as long as it's not harming the leg, to come in and look at all these policies, go through all the policies and stipends and give us a ruling on our business. Just have another group come in, MSBA, they've got attorneys, they have the douche, and they could guide us and look through all these policies and make sure our policies and our stipends are legitimate.
Thank you, Mr. Sneeden. Any other questions? Debbie, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker? Mr. Rucker?
Mr. Rucker?
Martin?
Ice cream is frozen.
Dr. Pauling?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, 7.2, Mr. Hartigan?
How is that?
Okay, 7.2 is the capital improvement asphalt projects for this year. I would draw your attention, if you were to take the low bid from each of the two general contractors and award the lowest bid to each, that total would have been $289,500. Unfortunately, Herzog Construction did not turn in all of the necessary required paperwork subcontractor list in particular, and therefore the district is in a position that the bid that we are able to recommend to the board is from Keller Construction at $305,000. That is for asphalt work at Hosea, the art facility, Truman, Old Hilliard. Again, these bids were less than anticipated because the scope of work was able to change as the damage to the foundational base of those drives was not as significant as we had originally thought. At this point, I would ask the board to respectfully accept the asphalt bids.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Mr. Rucker?
I made the motion.
Mr. Crisman?
We talked about this at the committee meeting, this is a local company, correct?
Yes.
Debbie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Pauling?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden? Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Hartigan, final plat?
This has been a long time coming. As you know, we're building two elementary schools targeted to open the third week of August. About a year ago, we submitted a preliminary plat to the city and what that meant was basically on 16 acres roughly for each site, it showed where the school would set and just some basic layouts. Between then and now, with the actual bids and construction, we are required and have completed the work on submitting a final plat to the city. And what that is, is it's just a very detailed, expanded design of exactly how all of the land will be used. Kelly, someone with Bartlett and West, has served as the civil engineer on both of these projects and he has worked with the city planner Dustin Smith at City Hall to cross the T's and dock the I's. At this point, we have made any of the revisions or changes, which were very minor, suggested by the city. So the city planner has signed off, we're very excited about this. At this point then, we would ask the board to accept the final plat as presented, signed off by the city. That allows us then to have the board president sign the final plat document. It would go to City Hall where we would have two readings before the city council. And that would conclude on June 23rd would be the final and second reading and the plat would be accepted by the city council. That puts us in a position then, that should any of the school work or streets not be completely finished by the start of school, again, it's raining again. completely finished by the start of school, again, it's raining again, we don't anticipate that, but should that be the case, it is an administrative decision on the part of the city to offer a temporary or conditional use permit, and it doesn't have to go back to the council, where you can get tied up for a month at a time. It strictly moves into the administrative arena where we have assurances from the city manager that a temporary or conditional use permit would be provided to the district upon council passage of the final plat. I don't know how detailed you might want to get into this, but Kelly is here with all of the documentation and can talk final plat with you for a good long time if you would wish. At this point, I respectfully ask the board to accept the final plat as presented to the city planner for approval by the board, signed by the board president, to be submitted to City Hall for council approval. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there any questions? I would just say those two.
Stan's ready.
Hearing none, Debbie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Poggin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Chrisman?
Yes.
Thank you for your help and support along the way. Okay, 7.4, student transfers, Mr. Shindor.
Mr. Hager, board members, we discussed some of the issues of transfers at the meeting, but I would like to just review a few things, probably more for the audience than just some things we talked about. I want to remind everyone that when we draw boundaries, we're basing that on information that we have on that day. As you all know, we don't control people moving in and moving out, so I want to remind everyone that the numbers at each school that we talk about are only as good as the data we pull those numbers. And so I'm hopeful. Mr. Hartigan has been pulling some reports over the last couple of months to see what is the mobility doing to those numbers, and I'm pleased to report that we've seen very little change. I mean, obviously, you're going to see a couple of kids lead each grade level, but nothing significant, and we didn't anticipate that. But I just want to remind everyone that the numbers are only as good as the data we pulled them. Also want to remind everyone that when I did the work for the boundaries, really the primary factor in that is looking at how many kids a school building can hold and how large an area then you have to expand out in order to be appropriately sized for a building. We don't take any consideration of other factors, for example, trying to predict how many people might want to transfer or could transfer, and it's just simply not something that we'd be able to figure out, so we base it on numbers. At the committee meeting, we talked about, one of the considerations that you have there is whether or not the board would entertain the idea of allowing students of the buildings that are being asked to move, allowing the sixth graders, career sixth graders that have been at that school, allowing them to apply for a transfer to remain their sixth grade year at that school. Fortunately, I've looked at the numbers and you do have that availability in the seven schools that are impacted, there is space for, not knowing how many of them would, but there is space, if they all did, there is space for those career sixth graders to apply for a transfer and we can accommodate them. Mr. Chrisman, you had asked about the next consideration, which was the fifth graders. Under the consideration, it only asked for the fifth graders of Bessie Ellison and none of the other schools. I did look, there is a possibility, again, without knowing how many fifth graders would ask for a transfer, there are a couple of schools that it would get very tight if they all did apply for a transfer. But again, I'll take you back and remind you that the last time we drew boundaries, you made accommodations for career sixth graders, and that's what we went with, and we talked about being consistent. So my recommendation would be that you stay consistent, that you offer a transfer policy for career sixth graders to remain in the seven schools that are impacted, and those seven schools are Bessie Ellison, Edison, Humboldt, Coleman, Lindbergh, Parkway, and State. And so my recommendation would be that you consider the sixth grade career transfer. I'll also point out that in that consideration, if a sixth grader who applied for a transfer to remain, and we would approve that, does not then allow for the accommodation of siblings to stay with them. And I want to remind the board, we talked about this in committee, that we heard a lot from the Bessie Ellison community about this, and I want to assure you, I went back and looked at the numbers again, and that there is currently in K through three, Bessie Ellison for next year, those rooms are going to be at capacity without transfers, and so I would now recommend that you open those up to siblings, or you're going to be facing some overcrowding issues. So my recommendation is that you consider a sixth grade career transfer.
Didn't we talk about just fifth grade, or no, there's something about Coleman?
Yeah, so the consideration was that there was a remaining section of the current Coleman boundary on the north side above the school, and the consideration was that, I believe there were about 70, 65 to 70 students there, the consideration was that we should open up the availability of those families to apply for a transfer at Oak Grove. I have looked at the Oak Grove numbers, I believe that, again, without knowing how many of those would actually apply, if 100% of them applied, you would be putting some rooms at capacity, but I don't foresee any major overcrowding. I only say that because I don't know, I can't predict how many by each grade level would be applying out of that attendance area. So without us opening it up, I can't tell you, but you have approximately 70 open seats at Carton Park before you have them all at capacity. So not knowing if there's 15 sixth graders or five sixth graders and 10.
I thought we were talking about the sixth graders. I thought that the Coleman one was if people wanted to go to Oak Grove.
They have been at Coleman.
They have been Coleman, and many of the Coleman teachers are moving to Oak Grove, and some of the kids who have been at Coleman for a long time, who are left behind, might like to go to Oak Grove where there is more space in all the grades currently. So we were going to allow for that, is that correct?
The consideration calls for any grade level.
Any grade level.
Only for that section of Coleman, who have been attending Coleman and wanted to consider a transfer to Oak Grove. That was the only consideration. There are also conditions, and as you saw, I put that would not apply then for families who have never attended Coleman, who have moved into that attendance area, or for anyone who was to purchase a home, that they would then attend Coleman and not qualify, under this policy, not qualify for a transfer to Oak Grove. We've talked about revising our transfer policy, but certainly might open it up to families later on.
And then there is no transportation provided as well?
Yes, and under all of the considerations, there would be no transportation provided for the students.
Mr. Shindor?
Yes, sir.
Did we have, did we make a combination for, I remember there was just a few families that had Bessie Ellison and did not want to go to Oak Grove. Did we make a combination for those, that few families that didn't want to go to the new school and they wanted to stay at Bessie Ellison?
We did, again, they would fall under the career sixth grader policy that we're talking about.
Okay. Well, what we're really saying is that, at least in this discussion, so I'm a fifth grader and I'm going to be in the sixth grade next year, and I have a brother who is a first grader and a sister that might be a fourth grader. I am going to be telling the parents that you can leave your child at the current school, however, yet provide your own transportation, and your other two children are going to be in a different school, so my schedule now will mean two PTA meetings that may or may not be on the same night, and parent teacher conferences and all of those kinds of things. I think that's really putting a lot of pressure on a family, and I would hope that if we were going to do something like this, we would at least be considering siblings of those to be sixth graders being able to go or remain so long as there's room. And we have board policies in terms of size of class, and as long as we're not going over the size of that class, I really hate to think about splitting families. Again, and so as we're thinking this through, let's think about how we would feel if we were one of those families.
Currently, right now, if the, according to GIS, if all of the kindergarten, first, second, and third grade students show up, live within that attendance area, you will be at capacity in every one of those grade levels. 25 students is capacity for K 1 and 2 and 27 for third grade. So if you were to approve any of those sibling transfers, you would be then required to purchase oversized class pairs. I do want to point out too, that since we talked, I have received in my office 31 staff transfer requests for Bessie Ellison and 24 staff transfer requests for Oak Grove. I don't anticipate the Oak Grove one being an issue, because again, I believe that there's capacity there, but in the June committee meeting, I would like to engage in conversations about how we address that issue. As I said, if the students, according to GIS, show up, all of those rooms are at capacity. You have the parents of that section of town asking for siblings, and you now have 31 employees asking for their children to attend there as well. And so I'm just asking that, I don't think we can solve that tonight, but I was going to ask that at the June committee meeting, if we have that conversation as to how we address that.
Yes, Ms. Stanford?
Dr. Poggin, I know that you were at a committee meeting this week, but the committee, and I see citizens out here that were also there, we spent quite a bit of time with Mr. Shindor, going through all those scenarios, and because that was something that we had wanted to see if we can do. But I wanted, I wanted the public here to know that we probably spent, probably 40, 45 minutes on that alone.
So at least you addressed that.
Well, we talked about after the school, excuse me, after the school year begins, considering other transfers if there turns out to be room.
I feel that.
Because we too wanted everyone.
Same page, same page.
As long as we've really thought that through, and we're not, we really are considering the family, because it's going to be a hardship, and I'm glad we will look at this again in October or December. That's fine, that sounds fine. Thank you, I appreciate that.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, let's see how we word this. It's a long motion. I mean, that we approve the transfers, I guess, as they're laid out in this document? I guess, I think all of those things are listed in there, correct?
The only one in there that is still in question is whether we should open it up, as Chrisman questioned. Right now, currently, that only states fifth grade at Bessie Ellison and no other schools. So I get, we would need to have a conversation as to whether we stay with that or we remove fifth grade from Bessie Ellison.
Could I add one more, a little point before you do that? Because again, we said no transportation. Well, what would be so wrong with the parents getting their children of those that are being permitted to move to the closest bus stop if there's, once again, room on those buses, and generally, there's room on the bus? And that sixth, that to be sixth grader, then being able to ride the school bus to school, as long as the parent would take the person, the youngster, to the closest bus stop?
We didn't, we didn't talk about that.
And I guess, that's something that Dr. Long would have to address with busing, it would require them to cross letter, but if parents were willing to.
If parents are taking them, then, you know, it becomes a parent responsibility, but again, it's a long way to Bessie Ellison, and for heaven's sakes, if parents can get their children to the bus stop, why not let them? They're going to have to get other children in a different direction now, so let's help them out as much.
I believe if you were to approve the sixth grade, I believe that you'd be able to accommodate.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. I mean, so, so the amendment is going to, or the motion is going to be changed a little bit?
Sorry.
I mean, that we approved the transfer policy as laid out in this, including that students could be taken to bus stops that takes them to the school that they want to go, or they are taken there by their parent. And.
Provided there's room on the bus.
Yes, provided there's room on the bus. I want to leave the fifth grade, yes, for Bessie, correct?
That's correct.
They might, depending on how far they have to drive. So I want the motion to reflect this document with the fifth graders being able to stay at Bessie too, if they would like to. Once, we can discuss that after there's a second.
I'll second. Discussion.
I would really like to keep it consistent and have it the career sixth graders, because I feel like if we're going to make a concession for just Bessie Ellison, then we would have to do it for all of the other ones, and I don't think, he said we don't have the capacity at the other school, so.
Yes, we do have it at Bessie, and there are so many requests, and I'd like to accommodate as many people as possible.
Mr. Shindor, wouldn't we still be able through the transfer policy, I mean, families can still request that, and if there's enough room, once school starts, I mean, that's at any of those schools, they can, we can still accommodate, correct?
Prior to the school year starting?
Whatever our policy is that. Well, currently, we have a hardship transfer policy. It's typically, you have a medical reason for attending, hardship is a medical reason for attending a school, and we approve those. I can tell you that over the, we've had that policy in place now for four or five years, and I can tell you that, I wrote them down, because I thought one of you might ask, since 0910, that was the first year that we implemented that hardship transfer policy, that year we had 16 students request a hardship, or 16 students who were approved on a hardship. The following year, there were two, in 11, 12, there were three, in 12, 13, there were 12, and 13, 14, there were four. So the number is very limited. I will tell you though, that we get, every year, we get multiple requests for transfers based on childcare. Currently, our policy does not, procedures state that childcare is not considered a hardship. What I'm proposing is that when we review the policy in October, that we reconsider that, that piece, but that would not happen until the company's in October.
I agree with Ms. Chrisman, if we're going to do the graders at Bessie, we ought to do it for other schools too.
The way this is written is, because we knew there would be space at Bessie Ellison if people wanted to stay there and not go to the new school, we were going to allow fifth and sixth to stay at that school.
Well, I thought we were going to do the others as well.
Those would be considered after the school year started, once we saw exactly how many students were enrolled and if there was space.
Can I clarify one thing? I brought up the issue of the employees that have sent a request only to tell you that those two things are related to each other, so how many, if we approved fifth graders to stay at Bessie Ellison, you, we are not going to impact whether or not we can, how many employee transfers we would be able to accept. Currently, right now, there are five fifth grade employee transfer requests at Bessie Ellison.
Does that change that there wouldn't be space now for the?
It could, depending on how many of those fifth graders, I just don't know how many fifth graders will apply.
So we could go over capacity then?
There is a possibility. I don't believe so, I think it should be right at capacity, I think it's safe if you wanted to do it. I'm just telling you that if they did, it may affect your decision once you do the inquiries. My recommendations would be that.
No, abandon.
I guess it's up to you.
Well, we'll leave it the way it is, and we'll see one or one six.
Okay, so the motion is to leave the sixth and fifth graders.
To prove this, with the addition of the transportation, if they bring them to the bus stop, they goes to the correct school.
As would.
And as long as there's space on the bus.
And there's room to do that.
Today.
He says he thinks so.
Today.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
All that other stuff is off of there?
No, it's...
Which other stuff?
So we're just talking about the sixth graders, right?
Sixth graders and fifth grade at Bessie Ellison where there was room and Coleman being able to go to Oak Grove if they care to at any grade.
Could we, one option would be to stipulate for the, for the Oak Grove one is basing that on numbers as well, to say that there was space available, that we would... The only thing that happens is that if we get, for example, in second grade, there are 25 kids and another one steps up and says, "I want to transfer," and you put 26, then all Mr. Flowers would be retarded for oversized class period, which is going to begin to cost the board education dollars if we do that.
How is there space?
Any further questions? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Recker?
Yes.
Dr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sabin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shindor. 7.6, Hilliard Technical Center Salary Schedules.
As discussed in the personal committee meeting on Tuesday, these schedules are for through adult programs. These programs are designed based on what we charge for tuition, to get break even program and they're, they're in front of the discussion.
Final entertaining motion?
So move. Second.
Any questions? Debbie, please call the roll.
Dr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, 8.1 is high school graduation. I don't have that on my sheet, Debbie, could you? Could you read those off, please?
Okay, at Lafayette, we've got Mr. Hager and Mrs. Prisman attending. At Central, Mrs. Stanford and Mrs. Prisman and Mr. Recker. At Bennett, Mr. Hager and Mr. Recker and Mrs. Hodges.
Thank you. Dr. Zawatta?
Yes, I just have a few things. One, as Ms. Teeman mentioned earlier, Dr. Teeman, she's standing here, what a great job they did this morning with the community garden. We have several community gardens around the district and it was just an honor to be there for celebration this morning as they were, there were good things going and it rained, it poured down cats and dogs this morning, but it stopped just in time to let me take a picture, a cutting picture of little babies and just a great job. And just as you saw, the community there really supports them and that food that they grow there will actually go back in to put the kids in the community. As Rick mentioned, we do have some new schools being built and it rains, thank goodness, they're inside right now and under roof, but that doesn't mean that we don't get rain on the outside as far as parking lot, they're not parking lot, but runoff and stuff, so they're working hard to do that. We did have several students that competed at the DECA competition recently and did very well and very proud of them. Also, many of you were at the state leader in me presentation and what a great job that was and really, really neat to see those kids leading us around and just sharing the many great things going on there. Benton and Central both, their theater programs are up for what's called a Blue Star Award and I believe that's going to be, Mr. Burbank, do you know?
22nd.
22nd, May 22nd will be the announcement for that and so we're anxious to hear from that, but both are being recognized for that. And I was also able to attend the Strings Concert, the North Side Strings Concert, what a great job that those young men and women did and I know Miss Hodges and some of you were at the meeting before that, earlier in the day, or earlier in the week, with the Twinkies program that Mr. Bott does with those kids and what a great job it is. The only other thing, I, Mrs. Stanford had asked last morning about the cost of the research on compensation, extra duty issues, conflict of interest and so forth, reviewing that documentation, board policies, board minutes and the issue analysis. And I sent that to the board, but that was from Mr. Mikus' firm and that cost was $1,132.50. That's all I have, Mr. Hager. We have, my son reminded me, I guess it was this morning, he has nine and a half days of school left. And as many kids do, but it's looking very good if we wind down the year.
Thank you, sir. Future meetings and events?
Yeah. Dr. Zawatta stated, last day of school's coming up, May 23rd. High school graduations will be that Sunday. First day of summer school is May 28th and then board finals and curriculum and instruction committee meetings will be on June 2nd and personnel and policy committee meetings will be on June 3rd. And that's the leadership summit, June 6th and 7th, but the next board meeting, regular board meeting will be in June next.
All right, thank you. Thank you to everyone who attended this evening. This has, it's kind of been a long meeting and we appreciate your support in being here. And with that, I'll entertain motion to adjourn.